Excellent. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the 2021 draft Qualified Allocation Plan Public Hearing. The Qualified Allocation Plan is DHCD's federally mandated state plan for the allocation of credits from DC's Federal Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program. My name's Richard Livingston. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff and Communications Director here, and will provide some brief housekeeping updates to get us started. During tonight's public hearing, you will be in listen-only mode until such a time that if you wish to provide testimony, you are elevated to the role of panelist and to provide that testimony. If you have questions during the public hearing, you can submit them online in the Q&amp;A panel, which is in, if you're in the full-screen mode at the bottom right, with the question mark icon located on the toolbar. If you're in half-screen mode, it's in that same spot at the lower-right side of your screen, and the same functionality exists for chats. If you're experiencing technical issues, please contact WebEx, and I'll read their phone number, but I'll also put it in the chat here, which is 1-866-779-3239, or you can go online to help.webs.com. But if you're hearing me and you're seeing the screen, everything is all good. You may hear me throughout tonight's hearing, but otherwise, you will be facilitated through this hearing by the Development Finance Division team. And to that end, I'll turn it to Manager Erin Wilson. Erin, you have the floor. This is also a reminder, I'm sorry, that this meeting is being recorded.
Thanks, Richard. I'm Erin Wilson. I'm one of the deputy managers in the Development Finance Division. Thanks, everyone, for attending tonight. We'll be having a public hearing, as Richard said, for the 2021 Qualified Allocation Plan. Our agenda for the evening is to walk through a presentation where we will review, just do an overview of what the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit is, what the QAP, the Qualified Allocation Plan, is, talk about some of the more substantial changes, and then open it up for a public comment. But first, I would like to turn it over to the DHCD Director for some introductory comments. So I will turn it over to Polly Donaldson.
Great. Thank you, Erin. Thank you to your whole team for all the work that you've been doing to put together the plan and for getting it out for a public comment. Good evening, everyone. I'm so glad that you're here. I think I saw some of you today at the Biz Now Conference, and I do know that we, I did speak to, and hope that you all, some of you would join the hearing tonight. So I'm glad to see that some of you are here. As you know, and as I said this morning, Mayor Bowser has set some very important and ambitious goals for housing in the district: 36,000 units of new housing by the year 2025, of which 12,000 would be affordable housing. So this plan directly aligns with those goals and really is the foundation for that, particularly the production of the 12,000 new affordable units by 2025. In addition, as many of you know, in the fall of 2019, DHCD and the Office of Planning together produced for Mayor Bowser the Housing Equity Report, which set some very strategic targets for an equitable distribution of affordable housing throughout the District of Columbia. And to know particularly that there were goals by planning areas and by neighborhoods, something that was really unprecedented and that very few other jurisdictions had done, if any, had done. And I really think that those two goals, both related to increasing the number of affordable units and having an equitable distribution of that affordable housing, is really groundbreaking for the district. And the goals and the outline here for the Qualified Allocation Plan follows those two particularly important priorities that Mayor Bowser has set. So, one of the ways that in FY22 that we're addressing this and that we will see the opportunities come with the incredible amount and unprecedented amount of resources that we have just finished the FY22 budget process. And with that, we will have an additional $400 million in the Housing Production Trust Fund. That includes $150 million in the supplemental for FY21, as well as $250 million for FY22. We will have $42 million in new local rent supplement program operating subsidies for extremely low-income households. This aligns with the 50% of the Housing Production Trust Fund that is statutorily required to go to the, to that, our lowest-income residents and our most vulnerable residents as well. In addition, there is $17 million for the Housing Preservation Fund. As you know, we require a three-to-one match on the part of the fund managers for that Housing Preservation Fund. And that means that that $17 million will generate three times that amount for FY22 in the Preservation Fund. And so, I want you to know that the QAP, the Qualified Allocation Plan, it does govern how we administer the federal law regarding the federal low-income housing tax credits. The tax credits are an incredibly important resource. They work with our gap financing, but they really are the principal means of funding affordable housing across the district. And it's the way to most efficiently use city resources in combination with the low-income housing tax credit. We also will have described in the plan, and you'll hear more of this from Erin as she presents, how we're going to administer both the 4% and the 9% low-income housing tax credits and how they will be competitively allocated. And we know that the district is going to, and we are going to issue a competitive RFP before the end of this fiscal year in order to take advantage of the increased resources for FY22. And we do know that the consolidated RFP on a competitive product does compete in order to allow gap financing as well as operating subsidy, and that we will be using those resources to help achieve the mayor's goals of 12,000 new affordable units by 2025. I look forward to hearing your comments tonight. I know we've also received written comments, and I will be reviewing those with the team as we look to finalize our Qualified Allocation Plan and then proceed to finish the drafting of the consolidated request for proposals. So, we appreciate your comments tonight. Thank you for those who are going to testify publicly or orally here, and thank you also to those who have submitted some written comments as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Erin Wilson, who's going to walk us through, as she describes, some of the highlights of the QAP. Erin?
Thanks, Director. We can go to the next slide, please. So I'd already talked about what our agenda is for this evening. We'll do the overview, the summary, and then we'll get into the public comment. Before I get started with the presentation, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. I do just want to thank the members of the DFD team who've been working on this and who will continue working on this: Rashmahala, Anna Scallett, Joe Naxton, and Cindy Onacuere have really put a lot of time and effort into this, so thank you very much for that. And our work is not done. It will continue. So in terms of the overview, so the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, as the Director indicated, is one of the primary sources for financing affordable housing in the nation. It is a tax credit that encourages the private sector to invest in affordable housing. Those tax credits are sold, and that resulting equity goes into the Affordable Housing Project in exchange for affordability for a certain time period. So there's two types of tax credits: a 9% tax credit, which is competitive and will be competitively allocated along with the district's gap financing through the Consolidated RFP. And then there's also the 4% non-competitive tax credit that is used in conjunction with tax-exempt bonds, which are issued by our partner agency, the DC Housing Finance Agency. And we work together in partnership to administer the 4% tax credits. Next slide, please. So DHCD is the responsible entity for administering the tax credit on behalf of the district. As I said, we do work in partnership with HFA on the 4% tax credit, which is related to the tax-exempt bonds. The Qualified Allocation Plan is the plan that's federally mandated for, to outline how the credits will be administered and how they will be allocated for the competitive side. It's based on federally mandated requirements per statute of what needs to be in the QAP and then is required to reflect district priority needs for allocation of the competitive credits. And the QAP does apply to both the 4% and the 9% tax credits. Next slide, please. So the QAP both outlines how the district administers the program, and it also outlines the eligibility criteria that a project has to meet to be, to receive tax credits, both the 4% and the 9%. So both 4% and 9% projects have to meet all of the threshold eligibility criteria that are in the QAP. And we'll go through each of these sections, but there's project criteria, financial criteria, applicant criteria, so the development team, all the various due diligence reports and plans that are required, as well as all the compliance requirements that come along with these resources. The 9% tax credits are competitive, so it's a competitive application, review, and selection process. And as I said, though, that resource is part of the district's Consolidated RFP. So along with the gap financing, the operating subsidy, and other resources that DHCD puts towards affordable housing on behalf of the district is also the 9% tax credits. Next slide, please. So I'm primarily going to go through what has changed from the 2019 QAP to now. And the district issues a QAP every two years, so obviously, this is the two-year update. So the review and the selection process is one area that we are putting forward to change. And the idea behind this change is to focus on very high priorities of the district for affordable housing, as well as to address some issues that we've had in making it more efficient for projects to apply and pass threshold and move on to evaluation. So what we're proposing, what you see here, is that two application windows. And there would therefore be two threshold reviews. So there'll be an application window, a threshold review where a project would need to meet all those threshold eligibility requirements that we'll look at in a minute. And then for projects that meet priority classification criteria, they would be pulled together and evaluated first. For projects that don't meet threshold review, for whatever reason, we would let them know you didn't meet threshold review, and they would have an opportunity to resubmit in a second application window. We would do a second threshold review, and then we would have another evaluation period for all those other applications. So the idea here is both to focus the resources on the district priorities through that priority classification criteria, as well as to address some of the concerns that we've heard from the development community to allow more time for projects that could be great projects to address threshold eligibility review deficiencies, and that way they can resubmit. So this would eliminate what we've had in the past, which is the 24-hour turnaround, where if you have threshold issues, you, the applicant, would have to respond within 24 hours and try to have those issues resolved. So that's been stressful, I think, for everybody involved. So we're hoping that this will be an improvement and really respond to making sure that we are targeting priorities as well as making things as efficient as possible, and so we can bring those projects in the pipeline. Next slide, please. So this slide really just shows the changes in the threshold eligibility requirements. I'm going to walk through these in a little more detail, but I do want to highlight here that there are a number of compliance criteria that were in the 2019 QAP, such as the Community Engagement Plan and general compliance requirements, as well as tax credit-specific requirements around year 15 that have moved. They have not gone away. They're still there. They've just moved into the project eligibility category upfront. Next slide, please. So talked about this priority classification criteria. So there's details in the draft QAP, but the criteria that this is based on is really around geography, location of projects, getting to responding to those goals that are in the Housing Equity Plan that the Director noted in terms of the district's overall goals for equitably distributing affordable housing. The other criteria are related to the production of net new affordable units, project readiness, so projects that have submitted for billing permits. And lastly, the proportion of units in a project that meet certain income levels, and that varies a little bit according to the classifications. So, but those are the four primary priorities that we're trying to get to with this criteria. And as I said, the projects that meet these criteria will be evaluated first. The other changes in terms of project criteria, one is that we've put forward the proposal that the minimum affordability period be extended from 30 years to 40 years, and then included some more detailed requirements around the use of qualified contracts, which have to be waived in the district, as well as more detailed requirements around first right of refusal. Next slide, please. So under financial criteria, we moved acquisition cost reasonableness from evaluation criteria to threshold eligibility. So it's not a new category. It was just moved. And in addition, there are some additional detailed requirements for tax credit investor syndicator letters of intent, letters of interest. So folks should just take a look at those, and please provide any comments to us on that. In terms of applicant criteria, development team performance will only be evaluated in the threshold eligibility requirements. It used to be the case that we also, we did a threshold review, but we also did a second evaluation based on scoring criteria later, and that has been eliminated. Next slide, please. So one area where there is a significant change is for the minimum standard for green building design and construction. And this is in response, hopefully, many members of the audience are familiar with the district's Building Energy Performance Standards. So as those are phased in to different-sized projects over the coming years, one thing that we wanted to be sure we incorporated in the QAP is to prepare projects to be compliant with those requirements in the future. So, right now, for new construction projects that are 50,000 square feet and larger, and for rehabilitation projects that are 50,000 square feet and larger, the Building Energy Performance Standards do apply. And so these updated standards, so EGC 2020+, and then the rehab standards, reflect the idea that any projects that are constructed or rehab now, we want to make sure are set on a good path towards, hopefully, being compliant with BEPS for the coming years. So projects that are new construction or rehab but are 10,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet, they will still have the same standard, which is Enterprise Green Communities 2020. Next slide, please. So we've talked, all of that was about threshold review. And now we're moving on to the evaluation criteria, so just highlighting some of those changes. What you see on this slide are changes to the evaluation criteria that are in red. The other lines that are not in red are evaluation criteria criterion that were already part of the 2018 RFP. So we're just trying to highlight the changes here. So in this section, the changes are evaluating the quality of the application. So is the information consistent? Are the assumptions that are used within DHCD guidelines? And if not, the application would be negatively affected, negatively impacted. The other new addition is to evaluate past performance for project delays or Davis Bacon wage rate complaints, as well as the agency's asset management reporting for past projects. Next slide, please. So here's a summary of changes to the remaining evaluation criteria. Again, the changes are in red, and they're asterisked. If you could go to the next slide, we'll walk through the items that we're going to highlight. So for each of these sections, so for inclusive and equitable housing, the proposed preference that is new in 2021 will be for projects that include programming for underserved populations that might face additional barriers to affording affordable housing, for example, re-entering citizens. We also are proposing a preference for projects that incorporate wealth-building opportunities for residents and services for residents, as well as for development team members that meet district-designated categories of businesses. And this is our effort to make sure that we are integrating economic and racial equality within this RFP. And this aligns with some of the past RFPs and other sections that DHCD has put out, as well as some of the offerings that DUMPET has put out. The next category are place-based priorities. The major change here is aligning the geographic preferences with the Housing Equity Report that was released in 2019 that outlines the affordable housing goals by planning area. There are also additional proposed preference for projects that are near transit and also near amenities that families need for everyday life and to be successful. Next slide, please. In terms of the maximizing the impact of DHCD resources, the proposed changes are a preference for projects that are at risk of losing affordability in the next five years. So it could be a project that is under an affordability covenant that is going to expire in the next five years, or projects that will maximize the allowable density of their site. The changes in the innovative and community-oriented features or programming are a preference for projects that would include innovative design features. It can be a construction design element or a services design element, as well as a preference for projects with comprehensive resident services provision, and especially for those projects that are tying their project amenities or community amenities with services. And lastly, a preference for projects that would have, that would create apprenticeship programs for those that would commit to a higher level of CBE participation above the required 35%. Next slide, please. So we walked through the proposed changes to the threshold eligibility. We've walked through the major proposed changes to the evaluation criteria. The schedule that we are looking at, so it's August 25th, we're having our public hearing. The public comment period will end on Tuesday, August 31st. So we need to receive all written comments by that time. And then, as the Director mentioned, we are planning on having a final QAP released by the end of September. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Richard to kick off our public testimony.
Thank you, Erin. We will now proceed to the public testimony portion of tonight's hearing after having heard about the QAP, hopefully having read about it online. Now's the opportunity to testify. We will first turn to individuals who have indicated that they'd like to provide testimony, and I'll call on those folks in alphabetic order as they've signed up. And as I do that, I will elevate that individual to the role of panelist. It'll take a second to do it in the system. You'll then need to unmute yourself. If you wish, you can turn on your camera. You'll have five minutes to provide testimony, during which time I'll keep track and indicate to you verbally that you have one minute left. And then, once your testimony has concluded, you'll be de-escalated to the attendee role. It will continue through. Once we've gone through the five or so individuals who indicated they wanted to testify in advance of the meeting, I'll turn to anybody in the meeting who wishes to do so, and you can indicate so for me in the chat. I see we have two people calling in on the phone. So what I'll do is, after we've proceeded to the folks who are joined electronically, I'll turn to those individuals on the phone, asking them to do the same. And the instructions will remain on the screen for individuals to refer to if you've joined us electronically. Now proceeding to individuals who indicated they'd like to do so in advance, in which case the first person is Ms. Combo and Alethea Combo, who I don't see having joined by name. Perhaps it's one of the individuals on the phone that we will get to at the end. So I'll move on to the next individual alphabetically by first name, which is Ms. Dwyer. Margaret, I see you're here, so I'm elevating you to the role of panelist. You now are able to unmute yourself and share your camera if you wish. And you have five minutes from when you start to provide testimony. The floor is yours, Margaret.
Thank you very much, Richard. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the opportunity to testify on this important document. My name is Margaret Dwyer. I'm the convener of Ward Three Housing Justice, a grassroots organization affiliated with the DC Grassroots Planning Coalition, dedicated to significantly increasing truly affordable housing through bold visionary action and community advocacy in Ward Three. And we find much to support in this plan. In particular, we strongly support the shift to two rounds of awards, thus providing more opportunity for a variety of players, including nonprofit community organizations to qualify. Likewise, we applaud the 2021 Priority Classification Number One, which includes Rock Creek West and Near Northwest planning areas. It's time to lay to rest the tired narrative that Rock Creek West is racist and exclusive and doesn't want affordable housing. We do. We do want it. And the mayor has called for 1,990 new affordable housing units in Rock Creek West by 2025, and it's time to invest in this worthy goal, and we want to be part of making that happen. At the same time, we are deeply opposed to the single definition of mixed-income housing found on page 11. found on page 32 in the plan, which places a premium on inclusion of market rate housing for 20 to 80% of the proposed units in a project. Earlier in the QAP, it says that that the plan is intended, quote, "intended to ensure the selection of only those projects that comply with federal law and address on a priority basis the district's housing needs." So what we don't understand is what priority housing needs, the inclusion of up to 80% of market rate housing addresses in a city with thousands of vacant market rate units. And what is the result of a requirement like this on a plan designed to respond to the urgent need for truly affordable housing? I would ask you to consider how this played out in the Wardman Hotel redevelopment proposal. So last January, Ward Three Housing Justice and the Wardman Hotel Strategy Team proposed a redevelopment project of the Wardman Hotel that meets many of the criteria set forth in this QAP. It's located in Woodley Park, an area with a deficit of affordable housing, but a wealth of amenities. We, it's near the metro. We proposed a green redevelopment. Our architectural concept study includes 500 units, many family-sized, in a mix of housing types for people living on 0 to 80 of the MFI. We think that was a wide range to allow residents to move up economically without having to move out. The study also includes opportunities for job and business development, supplemental classrooms for Oyster School, community recreation facilities. It accommodates renters from DCHA Section Eight voucher waiting list, as well as limited equity co-op owners as a step towards wealth building. The previous owner, Pacific Life, has a social bonds program that the city could avail itself of, thus reducing the purchase to a manageable long-term mortgage type arrangement. So why has the city refused to consider this project seriously? We believe that the single most significant obstacle was the commitment to a definition of mixed income housing that requires large amounts of market rate housing, one that is still embedded in the QAP, and one which we urge to be stricken. Over and over again, we heard from city officials, both elected and appointed, that they were concerned about our proposal because of concentration of poverty, a phrase that has been rejected by leaders in the field of urban planning as part of a conservative discourse of disaster that undermines confidence in our public institutions such as public schools and public housing. The myth is outmoded and based on the belief that there's something inherently problematic about striving households living together. Our proposal would have provided affordable housing and other opportunities for retail and hospitality workers, social security recipients, veterans living on pensions, barbers, teaching assistants, lab technicians, fire dispensers, school dieticians, clergy, speech pathologists, and others, all of whom make less than 80% of the AMI. The problems that have beset other models of 100% affordable housing have been the result of planned strategic neglect, something that's not accidental, irremediable, or attributable to the resident families. And in fact, this entire manufactured stigma is undeniably part of the, quote, "systematically racist housing policy of the past" on page 31 of the QAP, that the QAP is supposed to remedy. Visionary housing sponsors are moving beyond this limited thinking. The Urban Institute has reported, quote, "Although tax credits can be used for mixed income projects, most projects are 100% affordable to maximize the equity raised for the project 2018." In our region, Amazon has announced the donation of land to enable Arlington County to build a 550-unit, 100% affordable housing project for people living on up to 80% of the MFI. Fairfax County is exploring acquiring the land near a metro station, providing gap financing and tax credits to create an all-affordable housing project for people making no more than 60% of the MFI. So why not DC? We urge-
You're on time.
I have, may I finish my last sentence?
Absolutely.
So why not DC? We urge that the use of Lytechs be limited to projects like our Wardman proposal that provide mixed income housing for households living at 0 to 80% of the MFI. And I thank you again for the opportunity to be with you today.
Next, we will hear from Ms. Fraser. Shalon, I see you're here. I know you submitted written testimony, but I'll elevate you to the role of panelist, and you can unmute yourself if you wish to speak verbally about that testimony.
I'll read it. Thank you, DHCD, for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the Corporation for Supportive Housing on the 2021 Qualified Application Plan Draft, Allocation Plan Draft. My name is Shalon Fraser, and I'm a Community Investment Officer at CSH located in DC and the co-chair of the Housing Solutions Committee on the District's ICH. I'm here today representing CSH. CSH is a national leader in supportive housing focusing on the person-centered growth, recovery, and success that contributes to the health and wellbeing of the entire community. Building on nearly 30 years of success developing multi- and cross-sector partnerships, CSH engages broader systems to fully invest in solutions that drive equity, help people thrive, and harness data to generate concrete and sustainable results. In DC, CSH has assisted the district in the creation of the consolidated RFP, provided technical assistance around ending youth homelessness and creating quality supportive housing opportunities, and invested in affordable and supportive housing projects, as well as provided new market tax credit investments. Supportive housing is an evidence-based intervention that combines deeply affordable housing with services for individuals and families who need both housing and services in order to access and remain in housing. During the COVID-19 pandemic mandates such as shelter in place and quarantine at home brought lighter than devastating consequences for people without a place to call home and affirmed the value of stable housing as an essential component for public health, safety, and stability. Annually, CSH conducts an analysis of the 54 QAPs released by states, territories, and through this, we've become familiar with supportive housing best practices and opportunities for growth as it relates to QAPs. The 2021 draft DHCD QAP stands out among others for your commitment to supportive housing. We commend you for creating a priority classification for site-based supportive housing projects and a threshold eligibility requiring 5% of units be supportive housing. While we are pleased to see this, we believe that the need for supportive housing is outpacing the rate of development. Mayor Bowser has set a goal to create 3,600 new homes, with 1,200 of them being affordable by 2025, whom where DC estimates the district needs between 3,000 and 5,500 units of permanent supportive housing for individuals exiting homelessness, and that nearly 1,000 to 2,000 of those units should be side-based to serve people aging in the system with complex health conditions. When compared nationally to other jurisdictions, DC rents the highest for the number of units needed on a per capita basis. To meet the mayor's goals and also ensure that a significant portion of the affordable units are supportive housing, a higher portion of the units must be reserved for individuals who need access to supportive housing. To achieve this, recommend that either the threshold requirement be increased or that a supportive housing set aside be established. We believe that a 30% minimum set aside or threshold requirement would be needed to begin to close the supportive housing need gap. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide feedback to DHCD, and we urge that you consider these recommendations to ensure that supportive housing development is meeting the needs of those who remain homeless and unstablely healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Shalon. We'll now turn to Dimitri McDaniel. Mr. McDaniel, I know you also submitted written testimony, but I'm elevating you to the role of panelist now. And you can unmute yourself and share your camera if you wish, and the floor is yours for five minutes.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Hi, yes, I'm actually wasn't planning on giving, let's see if my camera works. Yeah, there we go. Hi, I'm Dimitri McDaniel with Bread for the City. I work with our community lord and project as a staff attorney. I'm not here to actually deliver full testimony, but I do want to say thank you for having me, and also that in our written testimony, we're open to talking, you know, extending the dialogue further. We wanted to focus on the point allocation system specifically, and we'd be happy to kind of talk about how we think extending that for deeply affordable housing can be brought further. Lastly, we submitted two other possible recommendations that we wanted to include with our testimony. That was an idea that we've been going back and forth with some other parties that is about the extending the TOPA preference to bankruptcy and like projects. We think that in DC, we've been seeing an enormous amount of properties who are either poor or deeply affordable, either by rent controls or some other mechanisms, being bought up through the bankruptcy process. And unfortunately, proper rights do not extend during the bankruptcy process. And so those properties that were either deeply affordable or for individuals at a lower income level were not receiving those types of preferences when applying for Lytech funds. So we wanted to discuss further why we think that the bankruptcy proceeding is similar to the TOPA process. And we also wanted to put a caveat on that to say that we would like for developers who were working with tenants and tenant organizations to actually be the ones that would receive the preference, not just any developer, but developers that actually try to approach the tenants fairly and work with them in keeping and maintaining and preserving affordable housing in the district. Finally, we are truly supportive of the nonprofit right of first refusal preference, and we would like for that to also be extended. And we appreciate that being included in the QAP. Again, wasn't planning on giving any testimony. I appreciate the opportunity. The testimony was delivered on behalf of Bread for the City and also Legal Aid Society of the District of Columbia worked on that written testimony as well. So we would be happy to stay in touch and talk further when, as we move closer to the end of this process in September. So thank you all.
Thank you for your written testimony and your very good impromptu summary skills. We appreciate you being here. We have two more folks who've signed up to testify in advance. One individual simply by the name of Robert, whose email address starts with the word connected. Not seeing anybody by that name, but perhaps a nickname is being used. So if that's you and you've joined us online, just pop your name in the chat and I will unmute you. And then we will also turn to our last person who has signed up by the name of Shand Willis or Willis Shand. And I'm also not seeing anybody by that name in advance. So what I'd like to do now is turn to anybody who has joined us this evening who may wish to provide testimony here verbally. We got a preview of the next slide, which is an opportunity to submit written testimony, which we'll get to before we conclude. But anybody who is here in the meeting who wishes to provide verbal testimony and be unmuted, I'll request that you indicate to me in the chat or the Q and A feature. And while those who are shy among us decide if they'd like to do that, I am going to turn to the three folks on the phone to just make sure that you may or may not be willing to testify, or interested rather. And the way I'll do that is by indicating the first five digits of your phone number. So we have a caller from 202751. I'm unmuting you, and you can tell us if you'd like to provide testimony. So the caller from 202751, would you like to provide testimony? Hearing not, I will mute you and move on to the next caller who's calling from the phone number that begins 240917. You're unmuted, area code 240. Would you like to provide testimony?
No.
Excellent, thank you for joining us. And then the last caller from phone number 443928. 443, did you want to provide testimony?
No, no, thank you.
Awesome. So thanks to those joining by phone and those of you here this evening on the computer. I'll make one more call for individuals wishing to provide testimony verbally who've joined us electronically. And in order to do so, I need to unmute you. And to do that, you need to indicate for me in the chat or the Q and A feature that you'd like to provide testimony. The one last call for those who'd like to do so. Going once, twice. Only I was over giving out cars. Erin, I will now turn it back to you to share the rest of the meeting, and this concludes the public testimony portion.
Thanks, Richard, and thank you to everyone who provided testimony both tonight and in written format. So the deadline for written testimony is Tuesday, August 31st at 5:00 PM. You can email written comments to qap input, I N P U T, at dc.gov, or you can submit written comments by mail to the DC Department of Housing Community Development. Attention, Danilo Pelletiere at 1800 Martin Luther King Junior Avenue Southeast, Washington DC 20020. So want to encourage everyone who has attended tonight to provide comments on what you think is, what you think works in the revisions and what you think could be improved. We really appreciate it, and I just want to again thank everyone at DHCD for the work that's been put into this point to get us to this point. So with that, and seeing no last minute, right, Richard? No one else wants to provide any testimony?
And we should share that the slides from this evening will be posted online at dhcd.dc.gov in the same place that you located the draft Qualified Allocation Plan.
Yes.
Hearing none, this hearing will conclude at 7:18 this evening. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.